Ask for Mayor Pro Tim Olvera to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and our invocation by Councilmember Alvarado.
Remain standing, please. Heavenly Father, we just come before you. We just thank you for this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you, Lord. We just ask you to guide us as we go through this meeting, Lord, and, and Lord, we just give all the honor and glory to you in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right. At this time, I'm going to move for an approval of agenda, uh, city manager.
Yes, there are two corrections to the agenda. Consent item number nine on some of the agendas in their title lists Teltec as the vendor. It is actually X I T. X I T is properly listed in the staff report portion of the agenda. The other one that's going to be corrected is consent item number twelve, which is the police administrative vehicle. We received a, uh, a secondary quote that was ten thousand dollars cheaper, so it will be discounted ten thousand from the list price that is offered.
Yeah, very good. Uh, any other changes outside of that? All right. Thank you very much. I need a motion and approval of amended agenda, mending consent calendar item number nine to note X T I cabling and a reduction of cost for the vehicle on consent calendar number twelve.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Olvera, roll, uh, second by, uh, Councilmember Espinoza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Proust?
Yes.
Olvera?
Yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
And Given.
Yes, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move into our public comment. Public comment is for any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda, um, or in any matter, subject, any subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers are invited to speak from the podium and address the city council. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Unless additional time is needed for translation, please state your name and address for the record before making your presentation. At this time, public comment is open. Hearing none, seeing none at this point. I believe we have one for the record as well. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, the city clerk's office received an email from Gary Rodriguez regarding Councilmember Alvarado and, and council and the needs of the community. The email was provided to the city council and a copy is available in the city clerk's office.
Thank you very much. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. We are going to move to close public hearing. Thank you. All, uh, consent, council announcements and reports. Uh, we'll start with you this evening, Councilmember Espinoza.
There was, uh, Officer Trainee Graduation. Um, I wasn't able to attend, but I'd like to welcome Jesse Gonzalez to the police force. Um, I attended the Wings and Wheels, uh, event at the Shafter Airport. Uh, it was a nice turnout, a lot of different things to look at there. On Monday, the tenth, uh, was the Oath of Office for Service Crew Member Mario Hernandez. Uh, I'd like to say Happy Veterans Day on the eleventh to all the veterans. And, uh, I attended the annual Kern County Energy Summit, um, at, uh, which arena is it? I don't know what it is, RoboBank, but I know it's got a different name.
Dignity Health.
Yeah, Community Health, Dignity.
Was it Marriott?
Yes. Okay, then I also attended, uh, Oath of Office on the seventeenth for Police Officer Jesse Perez. Uh, Gonzalez Finance Analyst for Luis Campos and Assistant Chief, uh, Police Brian Knox. I'd like to welcome them to the Shafter family. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Alvarado.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I, I do have like five questions and these questions I did run them by the city attorneys on Monday, so this way he wouldn't be blindsided or, or just not, you know, be surprised. Um, I know he had mentioned that he won't be able to answer all of them, but he will do his best as what he could answer and then the rest go through an email. Correct?
Yeah, I, I, uh, indicated to the council member that he should bring those up and, uh, we can certainly provide responses. Uh, obviously, it's not an agendized item. Um, and so, uh, we can't provide any discussion or any responses tonight, but we can certainly take them in. If it's acceptable to council, we can provide the responses to everybody.
Thank you, sir.
So number one, I, was the question is, uh, is, uh, has this process that we're going through, um, with the hearing officer, um, has ever been done before? And that was one of the questions and, and the other question, um, do I have to go and get myself a lawyer? That'd be number two. Uh, the number three question at, at, um, at the end of the process of the hearing officer, and I believe in faith, I'm going to be cleared. How do I get my money back from the lawyer that I had to get? Um, number four is about how much are we pay, are we agreed to pay the hearing officer per hour? And last but not least, can this process be stopped at any time? So those are the five questions, um, I would like for, if we could get some kind of response to. Um, the reason for is, is I just wanted the community to know that, um, the process that's taking place.
I'm leaving that to you. It sounds like he's already asked you these questions.
Yeah, and, uh, what I indicated is because it's not an agendized item, um, the best we could do is if the council wants, we could have a discussion about it later on, or what I'd like to do is prepare written responses and provide them to the entire council.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Um, what was number five? Cause you were saying that very quickly.
Mine?
Yes, please.
Uh, mine was, uh, can this process be stopped at any time? That'd be number five. And then number four was, uh, how much do we agree to pay the hearing officer per hour? And, and of course, number one was, has this process ever been done? And two, do I have, um, number two is, do I have to go get myself an attorney? And then number three is, is after this process is over and in faith, I believe in faith that I'm going to be cleared. So how do I uh, get myself reimbursed? And what's the process of that? What do I have to do?
Yep, thank you very much. So yes, we'll wait for you in regards to having that from your, uh, officer. I presume we can have that before the next meeting? Thank you. Anything else, sir?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Proust?
Uh, yes, um, I did attend the energy summit and, um, it was held at the Marriott and we did have staff members present as well as, um, Councilmember, um, Pete and myself. And if anyone's interested, I have the booklet that tells you all the, uh, program speakers and, uh, what happened there. And then also I did attend the oath of office yesterday for our three new employees, one in the finance department, Louis Campos, as well as, uh, three in the police department. No, I'm sorry, two in the police department, which was our new recruit Jesse Gonzalez and then our assistant chief who's joining us now and, uh, Ryan Knox. Also today I had an opportunity to attend another colors meeting and the colors meeting is planning for the event that starts in February and there's going to be lots of good activities that includes everybody in the community. And after, uh, holidays here, all that information will come out and you'll see. Starts on February the twenty-sixth and it goes to March the first. So there's something for everybody in. I hope to get more information and, uh, come and enjoy. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I don't have anything to report on.
Oh, man, making it easy tonight. Uh.
I did have a statement I'd like to read.
That's fine, sir. Go ahead.
Um, this is a statement in regards to some of the things that are going on. Yeah, I was elected to the city council in November of twenty twenty. It's been my pleasure to serve the city of Shafter as a council member. I'm all about Shafter being first and number one. I want to be as open and transparent as possible. No coverups, no attorney client privilege and not being bound by closed session. There's been some confusion on this issue. I've heard that, uh, I have made this issue personal. I disagree with that one hundred percent. I have no personal or private relationships with the council member outside of city activities. These are the facts as I know them. For the record, my name is not mentioned in these reports. Hundred percent is not mentioned. Uh, second, um, council member stated that we wouldn't, uh, if he wouldn't have brought these complaints forward, that we wouldn't be here. I agree with that. Council members' actions are what drew a response that got filed with the grand jury. The grand jury had its comments about the city charter violations, specifically section four point oh seven B. The grand jury mentioned that we do a follow-up investigation, which we did. Uh, I submitted my letter to the city clerk. These are the facts that I know and are allowed to say. I agree with the comments that Pro Tim Olvera made in the paper about the investigation already being done. Let's be open and transparent about these reports. My part and concerns in this matter as a council member would be fulfilled bringing the, being as transparent as possible. I just have one question I would like to ask council member. What would you do if the shoe was on the other foot and you were in my position? Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, I got you. Uh, with that, I have nothing else to add for this evening on council announcements. I have a quick question, uh, in regards to calendar. Um, I'm seeing a lot of things canceled right now. Do we have a updated list or can we send an updated list as to what's canceled and what's still active?
You guys should have the most up-to-date list currently, so.
Okay.
And everything that has been, like the first Friday cancellation has been released on social media, the Christmas tree lighting, the new time, so we can push folks to the Shafter Lions event afterwards has also been posted.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. All right, with that said, we're going to move into our consent calendar this evening. Our consent calendar, we have fifteen items. I will do a brief read-through of said items and we'll move from there. Uh, number one, approving general checks. Number two, approving payroll. Number three, approve the overtime report. Number four, approval of minutes. Number five, approving the special event permit for the Christmas parade on December fifth. Number six, accept the treasurer's report for September twenty twenty-five. Number seven, adopt the City of Shafter Employee Biweekly Pay Schedule effective October eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Number eight, adopt the City of Shafter Employee Biweekly Pay Schedule effective October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Item number nine was for the thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-one cents for X T I cabling. Uh, albeit I know it says installing security access control system from Teltec. It is part of that, but it is for X T I cabling. Number ten.
I am so sorry to correct you. It's X I T.
Um, I apologize. X I T. I'm gonna say that again. It's for X I T and the amount of thirty-eight, one sixty-five, eighty-one. Uh, item number ten is to authorize a general fund appropriation of thirty-one, seven, twenty-nine, seventy-four, the Teltec access. Number eleven is to approve a professional services agreement with Civic Solutions Partnership LLC for a not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to prepare the city's five-year economic development strategy. Uh, number twelve was revised, uh, which is approved the purchase of a new Chevrolet Tahoe from Richland Chevrolet in the amount of sixty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Emergency outfitting in the amount of seventeen thousand, three forty-one and three cents and mobile radio in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Number thirteen is to ratify the city manager's declaration of a public emergency and emergency repair work performed by Bakersfield Well and Pump, Lamont Fence and Witcher Electric at the water well site number nine valued of up to sixty thousand dollars. Number fourteen, accept a dedication of easement for street and public utility purposes within, within Assessor's parcel number zero nine one two eight oh oh six. And lastly, number fifteen, approve the addition of one full-time engineer, one-two position within the engineering division and authorize a budget amendment of ninety thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Questions, comments or concerns? Otherwise, I need a motion and a second to carry, please.
I moved in.
One second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Proust, a second by Councilmember Espinoza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Proust?
Yes.
Olvera?
Yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
And Given.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, this evening, we have two items on our public hearing dockets. Uh, item number one is for the public hearing on proceedings for the annexation of territory to City of Shafter Community Facilities District number zero eight one five, which is annexation number one. Hello, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the Shafter City Council. As stated, this public hearing is for the annexation of territory to City of Shafter Community Facilities District zero eight one five. Um, in the process of developing this item and also submitting it for, uh, public hearing, the recordation of the required map of the annexation of the county had an issue and so it wasn't recorded in time. You have to have fifteen days before the meeting and it barely missed that deadline. So because of that, what I would ask is that we would open the public hearing and continue the public hearing, um, to the December second meeting. We've already had a discussion with the, um, developer on this and they are fine with that. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you kind sir. All right, at this time, we are going to open up, uh, for public hearing on proceedings for the annexation of territory to City of Shafter Community Facilities District number zero eight one five, annexation number one. Public hearing is open. Um, at this time, uh, I am going to ask for public hearing, uh, ensuring from the city clerk that has been mailed and published in accordance with the law.
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance, accordance with the law.
Thank you very much, sir.
And then on that, due to the need to comply with certain statutory timing to record the annexation boundary map with the county, the developer and the city have elected to continue the public hearing on the annexation of territory to C F D number zero one five to the next reg- regular scheduled council meeting on December second at six P M. The public hearing will be continued to that date and the time to complete the C F D annexations and proceedings.
Thank you very much, sir. Public hearing will remain open and at this time, there is no action item to be taken on, uh, said item. We will continue this to the next regular scheduled meeting, which is December second.
Uh, we need a motion and a second.
You need a motion. Just want to say, you didn't put that on here, sir. All right, I need a motion and a second to continue said item, please. To December second, thank you.
Make that motion.
One second.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Alvarado, second by Mayor Pro Tim Olvera. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Proust?
Yes.
Olvera?
Yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
And Given.
Yes, hold on. All right. With that said, we're going to move into item number two. Item number two is the vacation of waiver of vehicular access rights. Mr. Gonzalez, still here, sir.
Doing this one as well.
All right.
As indicated, yes, this public hearing is for the vacation of a waiver of vehicular access rights. Um, on the screen, you'll see a map of the area we are talking about. So this is a lot in the Gosmer Grove, uh, development area. It is between Gosmer Grove Boulevard and the existing sump. It is the commercial lot, um, that is now designated there. And when the original track map submitted for this area was recorded in two thousand eight, yeah, it actually indicated the area to be residential, which was consistent with the specific plan that was approved in two thousand five. Because of that, a waiver of direct access on the Seventh Standard, um, road was required and recorded with the track map. What it did was it kept the developer from building homes that fronted Seventh Standard. So that's, that's why it was required. So it basically didn't allow access. In two thousand fourteen, a revision to the original specific plan was submitted and it designated the parcel for commercial use. So the current owners of the property approached the city and requested to have an access point on Seventh Standard to facilitate, uh, commercial development in that area. Staff reviewed the request and determined that an access point on Seventh Standard can be accommodated and adheres to all the engineering and city standards that we have. But in order to accommodate that, this, a vacation of waiver of direct access rights for a three-hundred-foot stretch will be needed. So with that, um, just a slight modification to the recommendation. So the new recommendation would be to, uh, conduct the public hearing and then at the conclusion of the public hearing, direct staff to complete a resolution to authorize the city engineer to proceed with and record the vacation of waiver of direct access for the three-hundred-foot portion as described in exhibit A that's provided with the staff report. So with that, that was, that was a lot all at one time. Be happy to take any questions or comments or items on this.
Stay put, sir, because you're going to have to say it all over again. All right, at this time, we're going to open up for a public hearing for vacation of waiver of vehicular access rights. Public hearing is open for said item. Right, hearing none, seeing none, none online. Thank you very much. Public comment is closed. Council questions, comments or concerns of said area? Okay, hearing none from you all. I need a motion in a second and we are motioning with an amended, and say that again, please.
To direct staff to complete a resolution to authorize the city engineer to proceed with and record the vacation of waiver of direct access for the three-hundred-foot portion as described in exhibit A that's provided with the staff report.
Thank you, and a motion and a second on, uh, what has been said?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Olvera, second by Councilmember Alvarado. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Proust?
Yes.
Olvera?
Yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
And Given.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Alex. Okay, we have one item on our management report docket for this evening. It is the council guidance on proposed Sound Garden Project. Hello, Dr. Franz.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the Shafter City Council. Um, my name's David Franz. I'm the Community Services Director. Um, tonight, I'm providing an update on, uh, the proposed Sound Garden Project. Um, and requesting council guidance on a few, on three areas, really. Um, excuse me. So Grow Academy students approached, um, the city with this idea to have public instruments in a public space. Um, and I want to begin by recognizing their enthusiasm, creativity and commitment to improving the community. It's, it's really great to work with students in Shafter all the time, but especially with those that are really interested in participating in our civic life and they've been, they've been, they've been great. Um, so I, I had a chance to go visit them, um, and talk about their, their vision for this idea or for this project. And, um, and then was able to follow up with, through their teacher with, uh, some questions and, and get their input, some of which I'll be sharing tonight. So there's really sort of three areas that I was seeking their input and, and really seeking, um, guidance from council. Um, the first is the, the role of staff, um, and and the, uh, what the process would be going forward. So my, what I'm proposing, I guess, or what, and, and the students, um, agreed with us is that staff would, city staff would take the lead in, in, in design, location and installation, that kind of the technical side, while continuing to involve the students and the public in the more creative side of this project. Um, and then asking for, for, uh, council direction on including this in the C U P for, or the C I P, rather, the capital improvement projects, um, for the coming fiscal year. The second area is location and design considerations, any, anything like that, that, that you might want input on as we're beginning to explore this idea. Um, students expressed openness to several locations, um, but, um, suggested Veterans Park partly because it's close to their school and it has educational opportunities. Or would be accessible for, for students. And, um, finally, budget guidance, the, the students, uh, what they were looking at in terms of instruments would cost thirty to fifty thousand dollars. Now, that's not the extent of the, of the cost. That's just for the items. This would be a, um, a prevailing wage project. It would require some engineering. It would require installation, which would probably be a, it would be a significant part of the cost. And with that, I would be happy to try to answer any questions that you have or take, take any input you have.
Thank you very much, sir. Council, open it up to you first. Any questions or thoughts in regards to the Sound Garden? And I guess if we're going to talk through the three items, let's start from the initial aspect of it. Um, is this something council that you want to see continue forward? I guess we'll ask the initial question there and make sure everyone's agreeing to that. I'll leave it there.
I, I think it's a great idea. Um, the presentation that was presented maybe about a month ago or so, um, is brought, brought some good, good, uh, quality of life to our community. And it's too bad we don't have pictures. We have, we don't have pictures now to show.
I don't, I don't, we have the presentation up, no.
Okay. Um, I thought it was, it was a great, great, you know, project. Um,
Yeah, I just want to make sure there's a general consensus to make sure that everyone's clear and good moving through. The, uh, council's ready for that.
I just, the other question was the location, I guess, but it's another question, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I, if, if there was a no on that, we'd stop at that point, but it, it feels like you have a general consensus amongst shaking heads here. So then, then location, you're, you're looking at Veterans Park as kind of your number one location?
So there, yeah, so Veterans Park is, is one option. Um, Stringham's Park has been suggested. Um, it would require making sure that, that we deal with safety. That has, it has some residents, um, on the other side of the block wall.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's, that's a question about sound. Um, then the, uh, another location, this is a bit more outside the box, but something we could explore would be the space downtown, um, in the downtown plaza. And that could be a, a reuse of the fountain area, so potentially getting eliminating the fountain in the center and, and putting some instruments installed there. That's one idea or somewhere else in that, in that vicinity. It doesn't have the, it doesn't have residences and so it, the sound is less of an issue. However, we do have events with a stage and so there's that question, but that's, that's another area we could explore.
Veterans Park is highly used, so if it's going to see usage, it's just going to see it at Veterans Park when it's all said and done. I think i- is that our number one park user? I have no idea who I would ask that to at this point. Public Works, someone, is that our highest park user right now? Veterans?
Well, it's built to accommodate all that extra, yes.
You got the thanks.
Yeah, the only comment I'd like to add is that I think it makes a difference in the sound. I haven't been able to participate at one that's already set up. I mean, I've heard about this project for many places for a long, long time. But if you want to consider the library versus an open area, whether it's, um, Veterans Park, but I mean, there is certainly houses around Veterans Park, but it needs to be located, I think, at a place where instruments are in tune with what's around there. Um, I'd like to maybe have a chance to go and see some of that or hear it. You know, and I think by having more discussion from staff would help a lot. Um, but I, I don't have any negative feelings on it. I just think we need to make sure that we locate it in the right place.
Sir, yes, um, Councilmember Proust, I would just point out that the new park in Gosmer Grove has a much smaller, uh, percussion type of this type. It is a great way to see. I took my nephew and niece out there. They beat on it non-stop. Uh, I am so glad I don't have a house right across the street.
Yes, that, that's the thing.
It's a great one to check out if you're looking kind of a practical look.
I, and I don't recall from the report that we said, do you, do you know how much space you're going to need or does it depend on how many different types of instruments are installed?
Right, so it would depend on the, both the sound and the space is going to depend on the instruments. Um, I asked the students for their input and they said two hundred to four hundred square feet. Um, and that seems a, about, I've, you know, the, the examples that I've seen, um, can definitely fit within that space, so.
That's kind of, kind of like this room, maybe. Well, no, half of it, because, yeah, six hundred square feet, it's a two-car garage. So.
Right, so I think it's kind of the, the podium here or this area.
So.
It's not that.
Um, I, the, um, at first I think it was proposed at the library, correct?
That, yeah, that was one of the, one of the locations.
Location. Um, Veterans Park is, seems to be like we all mentioned, it's pretty, a lot of, there's a lot of folks there. There's a lot of activities going on. Um, and I, you just brought it up, the Stringham Park. Uh, you brought Stringham Park up. It's a brand-new park and, you know, unfortunately, I don't work in town during the day or stuff like that or, or on the weekends as far as drive around, but how often is Stringham Park being used? So because it's a brand-new park, new, new, everything's in there, new swing sets and all. Having that there, so now it draws people to use Stringham Park. It's just not, or even the new one that we're going to be building on Fresno. Because it's, now we are able to mastermind the, the plans at Fresno because it's still in a process of being developed or Stringham Park that has not, I don't see a lot of activity there, but we've invested a lot of money into Stringham Park.
So Councilmember, just to, to clarify, I think what I'm hearing from you is you're saying it's possible that we should focus on a park that's underutilized to draw attention rather than focusing on.
It, it could. I mean, it's, it's our, I guess the, the goal, what's our goal? You know, um, I would like for Stringham Park to be used more just because it's a brand-new park and it's, it's a nice location, nice, you know, a lot of parking. Um, you know, more activities there because that, it's almost like downtown, not really downtown, but it is, you know, a lot of traffic. And I think it would draw more folks to Stringham Park to be used more.
Is Melissa here? I saw Katie. Okay. What are your, what are your students saying? In the end, your students are the ones, yeah. Okay, so what are your students saying here? Or do you have a student who would like to speak up on what their preference is on location? Yes. Cause in the end, it was your, you as students who brought this up to us. The microphone is yours, young man.
Um, yeah, we would, we would like it at, um, Veterans Park because of the proximity to our school. And that would bring girl students to it and, yeah, and girl students so that our school would benefit from the stuff that we built, so, yeah.
Nope, nobody else wants to take that mic, just you, young man. Just you, you did good on that, too. I mean, I, I, I'd follow suit with what the students are kind of going with here, so. I, I would be in favor of walking down this at Veterans Park if that's, if that's.
Yeah, I, I think that it's gonna, I mean, if it's something that proves that's, that's neat for the students and they like it, I think it's got the potential to grow to other locations. Absolutely. You know, either way, so I think at some point, we may have it at different locations.
Yeah, we can always have more than one. I don't know if you ever even thought about that, but. You could even go out and get a campaign for money. Can you imagine what the responses from our, you know, corporations and businesses around?
All right.
Yeah. It's just another thing to study.
So council, we can land on that. We're okay with going down that road? All right. The other question. Oh, the other large item, I agree with staff taking the lead. That makes a lot of sense here, especially with the prevailing wage project. My question to you, you were asking about budget guidance, however, you noted the C I P in the coming fiscal year. That would not be till twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh July, I guess that would be. Um are we talking current fiscal year, making an amendment, or are you asking it to move to the next budget cycle?
No, I apologize. That's, yeah, that's, I, I, we're talking about the next.
Calendar year.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay, so you are looking for the next C I P, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I mean, it's, it's, if you, if you, you're the council, so if you would like to accelerate that, we can, we can do that, I think, but. That was my thought, was that we were talking about the, the coming, the coming fiscal year.
Okay, fair enough. So uh that is up for conversation, I guess, at this point is. Council, do you want to see something actually take place in the current fiscal year, which is a budget amendment? Or move this to the next C, uh the next fiscal year, which just falls onto the next C I P, when, when it's all.
I don't know that we're ready with the plan yet, because we don't even have the design and everything ready to go, so. I think with taking the lead with the staff, and we've heard from the students and, you know, give us more time. It, it should be ready by twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Oh, I agree to that, but I think we would have to make a budget amendment for now to start the process of actually the engineering aspect of it. Yeah, you, you have work ahead to get it ready for build-out.
So we would need to do design and feasibility on it. Because there is no budget associated with this project right now, we really don't have anything to utilize to conduct that. That being said, I mean, we could do like we're doing on the mitigation measures. Council voted, and that's, it's a much bigger sum, but. Half a million dollars on the mitigation, traffic mitigation, so we could start engineering and designing earlier. We could do something like that. It's not gonna be the full price of everything. It's not gonna be the purchase and everything else like that, but at least we could conduct all the engineering and everything that Public Works normally would need to do.
So you have coverage for it then, you're saying?
No, you guys would need to vote an allocation that could be associated with this project, which we would then record.
That makes sense. Yeah, so I still think there's a necessity to have it in the current budget uh appropriations here.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd actually ask the uh Public Works Director, Alex, kind of how much we would need on engineering, design, stuff like that, so we can conduct feasibility.
Don't say a million dollars, Alex.
A million dollars? No, no. At this point, what I would probably suggest is a twenty-five thousand dollar allocation for design services. That being that, that is the limit that we can do with the bidding, bidding and procurement policy. Anything above that is gonna require us to come to council anyways. Um so if we do twenty-five thousand tonight and we can do design for cheaper than that, then I don't have to come back to the council. Or we don't have to come back to the council um for authorization, but if it, the design exceeds that, which I don't anticipate it exceeding that for something this small. Um then we can move forward with that.
The equipment itself is part of a co-op, right? Typically, park equipment has a, a co-op or a procurement uh purchasing plan. Inevitable, ine- inevitably, it means you don't, you shouldn't have to come back this way anyway, because it's part of a.
So even, even with the piggyback provisions that would be within for allowing us to procure this, it would still exceed my discretionary limit. So you still have to bring it back.
Gotcha, okay.
And that's assuming that wherever we purchase those from does participate in that, because not all playground or suppliers do that. So we would either have to gear towards a specific um company that does participate in that, or. Yeah, I, that's it. To go that route, we would have to do that.
So are we hiring outside for design and engineering?
Was this something we need to go outside for? Most likely, I would say.
Yeah, most likely at this point, uh this is something we need to go outside for.
Okay, so, okay.
I would say it, to, to add to that, I think general layouts and, and kind of low-level design stuff can, can be done in-house, you know, on a schematic level. But uh depending on the type of fixtures, if they require uh structural engineering foundational support, that's something we would hire out anyways. Just uh depending on how big the items are and.
Okay, maybe we ought to check with Grow and see what they did. I, I mean, I'll go out and look at it.
Yeah, it, the hard part with these ones is um kind of like the ones, I, and I actually got to see the installation in Gosmer Grove is. Uh they poured four-foot concrete puddings for each of those. All of that had to be engineered and laid out ahead of time, so, and that's what we would, we'd want to go out, make sure, especially. Depending on which way the students and you guys go with the sound equipment, how much of it, what type, uh it can change how the design would go out. So realistically, best case on this one, we get it designed by the engineering team. That way, we have a set plan, and then we kind of can cost it out.
Any other questions on that? So make sure I hear everything correctly. I, um. David, back to your three questions here. In-house staff, yes. So it'd be managed under, underneath your purview. Um at Veterans Park, thank you kiddos. And then we're looking at a twenty-five thousand dollar design limit uh to at least get this party started. Is everyone in agreement with that?
I don't know that we have to pin it down to this place right now. Do we have to pin it down to a place?
It'd probably be helpful so we can do a design based on what's there currently, uh just in case it's, depending on where it goes.
It would definitely help from our standpoint, because then we don't have to look at multiple different options, but. If the council would like us to consider two or three options, we can, we can definitely do that. It's, it's up to the council.
It just seems like we're moving so fast that we aren't, we aren't really sure what we're getting into, and maybe we need to kind of have more plans out here. Just on a simple basis. That's why, I don't know why it's so important to, to vote the money today. When it may, may not even be able to go until the next one.
Well, I would, I would venture to be the opposite of that. I, I think with your students uh speaking up on veterans. And at least having a design uh budget established, we can get a lot of that set up and, and moving in that direction.
I'm just looking forward for other schools to want to do it.
Mm-hmm.
For the future, so. So make the budget big now. Think big.
General concession.
I'm good with it, yeah.
All right, forward with it. How do you, how would you like to proceed, kind sir? There's, discussion and direction, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All righty then, with that said, uh there are no items left on our docket for this evening, except for our. City manager comments and reports, kind sir.
No comments, no reports.
And department director comments and reports.
No department director comments or reports either.
Oh, there you go. All right, at this time, I'm gonna move for an adjournment for this evening. I need a motion in a second, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by council member Alvarado, second by Mayor Pro Tim Olvera. All those in favor with I.